Hey, let's call the meeting to order and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please.
Council Peterson?
Here.
Council Geisler?
Here.
Council Jelly?
Here.
Council LeBlanc?
Here.
Mayor Boucher?
Here. Do any councilors have announcements this evening? We have no public hearings, communications are on file, no presentations. We are on number eight, public discussion. This is the time for individuals to dress, address the council about items not on the agenda. We ask that you limit your time to three minutes per person. If you're here for an item that's on the agenda, there will be a public discussion during that time. So if anybody wishes to address the council at this time, please step forward to the podium and start with your name and address.
My name is Tim Restford, thirty-six forty-six Midway Road. I've come here to ask questions about the project that's going in the southwest section of Hermantown, between the Morris Thomas Road and the St. Louis River Road and the Midway Road.
Does that have a mic on there?
It is.
It is. It's very loud.
I got your first name was Tim?
Yes.
Okay.
And the question is asking, we know, people in that area know that the substation is being rebuilt. That's not the question. It's what the database of project that's coming in there. And we would like to have the city council give us some information about that. And so far, we haven't heard from anybody. And we asked the zoning commission, and they said they don't know anything about, nothing about the zoning that's coming into their substation business management. And we would like to know as people from that area about the letters that people are getting about having their residents bought out. And this Mortenson Hermantown project, they're the one that's going to be building it. And basically, we'd like to know who's going to be buying all these residents and are they going to be forced to sell their homes? And I got an article out of the Star that it was during our zoning committee, planning a zoning commission on March eighteenth with no members of the public speaking, and there was. There was about four of us here, maybe five. I got up and asked about it, but the paper said no. I don't know why that was put in there like that. And then could you tell us what databases is going in that, that project?
First, let's start with the Hermantown Star. We can't tell them what to print or not to print. You can ask and get copies of the official minutes of any meeting.
I did. It went to the Star. And this was from the city council.
Okay.
I got the article right here if you just want to look at it. But we were just wondering why they would put that in there when I talked to the Star.
Okay, well.
And we'd also like to know about this Mortenson building in Hermantown.
Is that a city publication, sir?
All this came from the builders. And planning and zoning commission under five D, fourteen parcels totaling three hundred and twenty acres. Quadrant, southwest quadrant of the Morris Thomas Road, Midway Road. And also had to be with the St. Louis County Road, and we got all the quadrants, locations of the people that are there. And we would like to know what's going on. And if you could give us an idea of what's going on, it would be awfully amazing because these guys are the ones that started this.
To be as diplomatic as possible, I'll let our city administrator address that question.
Well, you're asking a number of questions. One is, no one's being forced to sell their home. We know that there are private land transactions going on there. We don't know all the details of that, but we do know that somebody is acquiring property. They're not being, it's not, it's not the city's action. It's simply a private land transaction.
So what you're seeing, if then people don't sell, they can still keep their homes and that stuff there.
That's entirely within their right to do.
Yeah. Because up on the solar, I think that was mostly MPNL. They wiped out the homes up there.
To the extent that Minnesota Power is acquiring property, they do have the ability of eminent domain if they need to do that.
And that's up at the OD that's trying to do this out of the city limits and the solar vehicles and the MPNL was planning them.
Yeah.
And solar power.
Yeah, I can't, I can't speak to Minnesota Power's plans. They, a utility does have the ability to do eminent domain, but that's not the city involvement at all.
This isn't from MPNL. As far as Amazon, not Amazon, but this database company that wants to move in.
That's a private land transaction. That's entirely up to them.
But these are the ones that, okay, this, because that was in the paper, the Star paper, and we found out about that the southwest section of Hermantown is going to rezone.
There are a number of properties currently on the agenda that are being rezoned. All of those properties that are being rezoned are either owned by Minnesota Power or their land company, the Renfield Land Company.
No, I'm talking about the ones, these people for their houses on the west side of Midway Road, and they got all the parcel numbers right here from the zoning.
Again, those parcels are all parcels that are owned by the Minnesota, Minnesota Power or the Renfield Land Company.
Well, as far as some of them say that they, there are people they own that. There was three hundred twenty-eight acres or whatever it was there I mentioned. And MPNL doesn't have all that.
Well, I doubt.
They do not own down to the Midway Road, and they do not own all the way up on the St. Louis River Road. Those are private homes and that. And the same thing with the Morris Thomas Road.
I'd like to look at your list, but the land that is being proposed to be rezoned tonight is all owned by the Renfield Land Company or Minnesota Power.
Okay, well, I was bringing this up because there was another thing in here with the News Tribune. Minnesota lawmakers are squabbling over the data centers in Minnesota here, and I don't know if these guys ever get the News Tribune paper, if he's ever read it. But it's both Republicans and Democrats talking about this database, and it's going in there up at the substation because of the power they need. And then one of the biggest problems is too, that this database is, they generate an awful lot of heat. Then they have to be air-cooled. And that's one of the reasons why they're coming into Minnesota and that, because of our cold weather in the wintertime, it'll cut down on their air conditioning. Now, in order to air condition them databases, on an average, it'll require anywhere from two hundred and fifty thousand to three hundred thousand gallons of water a day. And we want to know when they put that in there, where this water is coming from. If the city council was going to allow this. And we've heard that they're going to put a new tower up quite big on the Midway Road, and they were going to send that water line down to this database. Now, did you know anything about that?
We do not have any application for what you referred to as a database at this point in time.
So you don't know anything?
The city has talked about the possibility of extending water to the southwest part of the city because we believe as part of the comprehensive plan that it is a prime source for development for industrial uses because of the transportation, the railway, and the electricity.
Well, as of now, the electrical substations have never needed that much water. And the railway doesn't need that.
No, but we believe those two things might lend itself to development in that area.
But what everybody seems to know, except for the only city council right now that you're saying, is that you don't know nothing about this database.
There's nothing that I can share about this, about any of that at this point in time, other than what is publicly known.
It is our homes and our zoning that you're changing, and you don't want to see anything about it.
We're not changing zoning on anybody's homes tonight.
Well, it's going to light business and manufacturing.
Not on anybody's homes tonight. The only properties that are being rezoned tonight are owned by Minnesota Power and the Renfield Land Company.
So in other words, it's Mortenson deal with the Hermantown project. You have no idea what that is?
Nothing that we can talk about, no. We don't know.
Why can't you talk about it to tell us residents, okay, what's going on in our?
If a private land owner, if a private company wants to buy land, that's not the city's business because they may or may not be doing something. We don't know that for sure.
Well, evidently you just have to know something because you changed the zoning for it.
We are proposing to change the zoning on Minnesota Power and Renfield Land Company's land.
Who's land?
Minnesota Power or the Renfield Land Company.
The Renfield?
Renfield.
Who are they?
That's the company that's owned by Minnesota Power. That's their land division.
Yeah, we're not talking about the substation because we know that's already been taken care of.
And.
We're talking about the residents that are getting.
Sir, we're approaching eleven minutes and a three-minute limit, and we do have a bunch of other business tonight. Will you have the option of sticking around after the council meeting and talking to us? And I'll be sticking around and be willing to share anything I can with you at that time. But the motion that's on the table tonight that we will get to later is involving no one's home. It's the Renfield Land Company and Minnesota Power only.
I was just looking for a question on either yes or no about the database.
We don't have any information about any database thing at this time. Well, it's, it's nice that you do. I. Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to the council? Please start with your name and address.
Hi, my name, is this on? Can you hear me?
It's on.
My name's Marissa Klingeisen. I live in Peyton Acres, three nine three two Teal Lane. Just had two questions for you guys. I wasn't quite sure who to ask, so I figured this would be the spot to come. When we bought land, they said that there would be sidewalks throughout the development. And we're in the third cul-de-sac. The first two do have sidewalks. Ours has like a partial sidewalk. It's like the first few houses and then it doesn't go all the way through. So just before we finish our landscaping, we are curious if the sidewalk was going to be finished. And then the second question, just this spring, we've noticed that there's a lot of water drainage at the end of the cul-de-sac. A ton of water runoff, and it pools to the point where it's like freezing, almost like a lake. So I just think about, we're about to have our first child soon and just with the school bus and walking out there. I haven't even felt comfortable walking out there because there's so much water where it freezes and it's really slippery. So those are just my two questions to look into.
Mr. Mulder, maybe we could ask Mr. Johnson those questions?
Well, I didn't, I don't know the exact stats of that, but like some of that work is in progress.
Okay.
But we'll take a look at the drainage issue with the city engineer.
Perfect. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, exactly. As Mr. Mulder just mentioned, there's a few projects under these previous phases that are still in various processes that way. And I know that the water at the end of that cul-de-sac, that's been something the city engineer has been looking into.
Okay, perfect. And the sidewalk, you're not sure on or?
Sidewalk, I have to look at the plans. Generally, how it works out is we, we don't do a full, all the way around the cul-de-sac and come back again. We usually bring it around a certain portion of it.
Okay.
So I would just double-check the plans and see how it relates to your home, but we can get back to you about that as well.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak to the council tonight?
Mike Ralph, five seven eight one St. Louis River Road. Now, I got here your agenda as March eighteenth. This is your agenda. Five C, your zoning ordinance text amendments by the City of Hermantown, amending chapter five, section five three five, business and light manufacturing pertaining to communication service facilities. Now, what does that tell you? Letter from Mortenson. Mortenson is looking to buy houses and property in the area of Morris Thomas Road, St. Louis River Road, and Midway Road. And the site selection is for an industrial project in Hermantown in the area of that. You don't know anything about it.
Not anything that's public?
They're buying up land. This ain't, this ain't the MPNL thing. This is something completely different because all those parcels that were bought already and the houses are tearing down, that is MPNL's addition for their substation. Now, this is completely different. Two letters now here saying that it's for a communication communication center. And, and we don't know nothing about it.
We do have a motion on our agenda later in the meeting to add the definition of communications center or communication facility to the list of uses in the ordinance. But it does not designate any area at this time. If you'd like to stick around for that.
I'll go.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak to the council? Last opportunity for general public comment. If anyone wishes to speak to the council, please step to the podium and start with your name and address. Hearing none, we will move on to the consent agenda. Consent agenda is minutes approval or correction of the April seventh, twenty twenty-five city council continuation minutes and accounts payable approved general city warrants from April first, twenty twenty-five through April fifteenth, twenty twenty-five in the amount of two million, seven hundred ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred nine dollars and fifteen cents. Is there a motion related to the consent agenda? Motion to approve by Council Geisler. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Council Peterson who just made it? Roll call, please.
Council Jelly?
Aye.
Council LeBlanc?
Aye.
Council Peterson?
Aye.
Council Geisler?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Next is ordinance twenty, twenty twenty-five dash ten, an ordinance amending chapter two definitions. This is the second reading. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve?
Motion by Council Jelly. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Council LeBlanc. Mr. Mulder?
Maybe Eric can explain.
Mr. Johnson?
Great, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Before, as you previously mentioned, this is an amendment to chapter two definitions, adding communication facilities to that language. Basically, as the city finalizes its comprehensive plan, there have been discussions at the staff level as well as with our consultant on potential language or use updates to the city's zoning ordinance. As we're aware, in the plan, in the comprehensive plan, we're looking at this portion of the city as a potential light industrial type of use, given the, basically the roadway system down there as well as the electrical possibilities and the railroad as well. For instance, this previous comprehensive plan was done in two thousand and one. And since then, we've been updating language as we move along and we think, as things become more evident. Once again, as business light manufacturing, light industrial uses continues to evolve through the years, we thought it just was a good proactive that we'd be able to add communication facilities to our definitions and then look into where these could occur at a later date.
Any questions from council? So this change in definitions does not set a specific area for that definition to be applied to?
That is correct. That would, that would happen at a different zoning associated with that at a later date.
And that would change zoning, which would go through the planning and zoning commission, which would allow for the possibility of public input on those additions or changes?
Yes, that is correct. It would have a public hearing of planning and zoning and then action before the city council.
Thank you. Any questions or comments again from council? Is there any public input on this ordinance definition change? If so, please step forward to the podium and start with your name and address. Any public input on item twenty-five dash ten? Is there any input to the council on ordinance twenty-five dash ten and ordinance amending chapter two definitions? Roll call, please.
Council LeBlanc?
Aye.
Council Peterson?
Aye.
Council Geisler? Council Jelly?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Now, we have ordinance two thousand twenty-five dash twelve and ordinance amending title two of the Hermantown City Code by amending the official zoning map. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve by Council Jelly. Is there a second? Second by Council Geisler or Mr. Mulder? Should we have Mr. Johnson explain this one?
Yes, please. Mr. Johnson.
Great, thank you again, Mr. Mayor. As we previously spoke about, the city of Hermantown is working and finishing up our update to the comprehensive plan. As part of that work, we're looking at the southwest corner of the city to look at light industrial type of use. So there are fourteen parcels in that portion of the city that are either owned by Minnesota Power or the Renfield Land Company. They are the owners of that property, and they're primarily utility-based business that way. So these subject parcels are currently within the S-one suburban zoning district. And so although public utility services are permitted use within that zoning district, i.e. the elite substation, the Minnesota Power substation, use does not really align with your typical zoning. So in order to align the zoning with the comprehensive plan, the city is proposing the rezoning of these fourteen parcels to that business and light manufacturing, which more accurately describes the nature of those parcels.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Is there any public input on this ordinance? Is there anyone from the public that wishes to comment on two thousand twenty-five dash twelve? Is there any public input on the ordinance amending the title two of the Hermantown City Code by amending the official zoning map? Roll call, please.
Council Peterson?
Aye.
Council Geisler? Council Jelly?
Aye.
Council LeBlanc?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Next are resolutions, resolution two thousand twenty-five dash six four, resolution approving premises permit application for the Odd Shrine of Hermantown to allow lawful gambling at the Odd Shrine Event Center. Is there a motion? Motion to approve by Council Geisler. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Council Peterson. Mr. Mulder?
So Odd Shrine has asked, made an application to, for gambling at that location. They have to make an application to the state of Minnesota as well, but the state of Minnesota requires that the city make that approval as well. So we're recommending that you would allow lawful gambling at the Odd Shrine.
Thank you. Is there any questions or comments from council? Hearing none, is there any public input on this resolution? Do we have any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-five dash six four? Is there any public input on the resolution approving premises permit application for the Odd Shrine of Hermantown to allow lawful gambling at the Odd Shrine Event Center? Roll call, please.
Council Geisler?
Aye.
Council Jelly?
Aye.
Council LeBlanc?
Aye.
Council Peterson?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Next is resolution two thousand twenty-five dash six five, resolution receiving bids and approving award of contract to Collins Roofing and Sheet Metal for the labor and materials necessary to repair the Hermantown Public Works Building roof. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Council Peterson to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Council LeBlanc. Mr. Mulder?
In the winter of twenty twenty-two, we had a considerable amount of snow, and we had some damage to the roof at the Public Works Building. We've been working through the insurance companies, and then we went out and sought bids for the replacement. This would replace the roof and the insulation and provide a new roof to the Public Works Building.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments from council? Hearing none, is there any public input on this resolution? Do we have any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-five dash six five? Is there any public input on the resolution receiving bids and awarding a contract to Collins Roofing and Sheet Metal? Roll call, please.
Council LeBlanc?
Aye.
Council Peterson?
Aye.
Council Geisler? Council Jelly?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Next is resolution two thousand twenty-five dash six six, resolution approving comprehensive plan update as prepared by Hollingston Kegler Group Incorporated. Is there a motion? Motion by Council Geisler to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Council Jelly. Mr. Mulder?
This has been a long process and a lot of work has been done, and Eric really has done a lot of the heavy lifting. So I'm going to let him finish this project and explain it to you.
Great, thank you very much, Mr. Mulder and Mr. Mayor. So as Mr. Mulder alluded to, this project, it started back in the summer of twenty twenty-two with HKGI. It's a little easier to say than their full name. I grant you that. So I'll give you a little bit of a background just to help the people in the audience here as well. So as part of that process, to initially start off, there is a formation of a ten-person advisory committee. This consisted of local business owners, local residents, really to obtain their input and ideas as we move through that comprehensive plan process. In addition, the city held multiple public engagement opportunities. We're at Summerfest, chamber meetings, public open house here at City Hall, and had a very successful online comment map associated on their city's website as well. In addition, we also had multiple presentations to the park board, planning and zoning, as well as a couple presentations here to the city council as well. So to help everyone out, this is a seven-chapter update to our comprehensive plan. We cover chapters such as plan, purpose, and vision, backgrounds and trends, natural resources and recreation, land use, economic and housing development, transportation utilities, and most importantly, implementation. So to touch on a few of the major updates associated with this comprehensive plan, right now, the city really is pretty straightforward is that we have three residential zoning districts. We have commercial and we have light industrial. So as part of this comprehensive plan, we look to broaden that list of potential land uses associated with it, bringing in ideas such as mixed-use development. In that case, you could have developments that included housing, commercial office, maybe even some light industrial uses that way, provide some more opportunities, flexibility for some of these undeveloped properties within the city. As we go further into this process, right now, the comprehensive plan really serves as the backbone for the zoning associated with it. So the next step will be to continue to work with HKGI is we dive down deeper into the zoning code analysis, basically updating any of these existing sections that we have and perhaps. Uh, basically updating uh, any existing sections that we have and perhaps drafting new uh, zoning sections as well to reflect some of these changes that way. So uh, it's been a very long process. We had great engagement and uh, really look forward to taking the next step associated with this.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments from council? Uh, Mr. Johnson, there will be a follow-up to this where specific zoning things may happen and change over the next few years. And those would all be done through planning and zoning?
That is correct, yes. We would start with the planning and zoning process, publicly notice those so we could obtain input from residents and then it once again come to city council.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? Is there any public input on the resolution approving the comprehensive plan update? Any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-five dash six six? Last opportunity for public comment, comment on the resolution approving the comprehensive plan update. Roll call, please.
Council Jelly?
Aye.
Council La Bla?
Aye.
Council Peterson?
Aye.
Council Geisler? Mayor Boucher?
Aye, and only four to go.
Resolution two thousand twenty-five dash six seven. Resolution approving a special use permit for grading and filling within a natural shoreline overlay area. Do we have a motion relating to this?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Council Peterson, is there a second? Second by Council Geisler and Mr. Mulder, should we have Mr. Johnson address this?
Yes, please.
Great, thank you again. Uh, this is a one-acre property located at four two six four Uggstad Road. For the most part, this is generally on the east side of the street uh, from the Hermantown, or the Wellness Center, Central Wellness Center. Uh, in the front part of this property, there is a tributary to the Rocky Run. As you drive by it, it really seems to be a built ditch, but it is in fact a tributary to the Rocky Run. So because of that, there is a shoreline area associated with this. All the properties along this area that are looking for either additions, creating and fill activity, new construction, et cetera, uh, go through this special use process. We did this for the Hermantown Arena, we did this for the Wellness Center, and now before us is this property at forty-two sixty-four. So what the applicant is looking for is doing an addition to his primary structure, i.e. his home. And what he's doing is on the rear of the home, there's going to be uh, an addition. That part of the portion, the site is outside of the shoreline, but there is a four hundred and fifty square foot addition on the south side, which does fall within that shoreline area. So associated with that work, there'll be seven hundred and fifty square feet approximately of shoreline impact. And uh, we're required to go through this process per our basically state statutes with the Minnesota DNR.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments from council? Hearing none, is there any public input on this resolution? Is there any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-five dash six seven? Is there any public input on the resolution approving a special use prevent for grading and filling within a natural shoreline overlay area? Roll call, please.
Council Peterson?
Aye.
Council Geisler? Council Jelly?
Aye.
Council La Bla?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Next is resolution two thousand twenty-five dash six eight. Resolution authorizing and directing mayor and city clerk to execute and deliver a development agreement with JLG Enterprises of Hermantown LLP for Peyton Acres Phase Three. Do we have a motion?
Who to approve?
Motion to approve by Council La Bla, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Council Jelly. Mr. Mulder, is this another one for Mr. Johnson?
It is.
Thank you again, appreciate it. Uh, this is the phase three development agreement. It outlines the requirements, the infrastructure work associated with this phase of development. Uh, this is an eight-lot, one-outlot subdivision for this. Uh, the eight lots will be uh, our three residentially zoned project or properties. The outlot is for a future phase associated with Peyton Acres. So this development agreement covers sidewalks, water and sanitary sewer mains, as well as the roadway associated with that project. Uh, the stormwater for this particular phase was already handled as part of the phase two work, so that is already in place that way. That's anticipated that this phase three is going to run through the twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six construction seasons.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from council? Hearing none, is there any public input on this resolution? Any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-five dash six eight? Any public input on the development agreement with JLG Enterprises of Hermantown LLP for Peyton Acres Phase Three? Roll call, please.
Council La Bla?
Aye.
Council Peterson?
Aye.
Council Geisler?
Aye.
Council Jelly?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Next is resolution two thousand twenty-five dash six nine. Resolution authorizing and directing mayor and city clerk to execute an acceptance of easement agreement to the city of Hermantown from James and Susan Sandberg for the Hermantown Trail Project. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Council Peterson to approve, is there a second? Second by Council Geisler. Uh, Mr. Mulder, should we have Ms. Cragle answer this one?
Yes, please.
Is it off? Is it on? Thank you. This property is located on Johnson Road and um, has an existing twenty-foot easement for trail on it, and this would be just an additional twenty feet um, to the, the east of the existing. And the Sandbergs have agreed to let us have that. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions on this from council? Comments? Is there any public input on this resolution? Any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-five dash six nine? Any public input on the acceptance of an easement agreement for the Hermantown Trail Project? Roll call, please.
Council Jelly?
Aye.
Council La Bla?
Aye.
Council Peterson?
Aye.
Council Geisler? Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Next is resolution two thousand twenty-five dash seven zero. Resolution authorizing application for, and if successful, acceptance of a greater Minnesota housing infrastructure grant from Minnesota Housing Finance Agency in the amount of up to three hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. Is there a motion?
Motion by Council Geisler to approve, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Council Peterson. Mr. Mulder, should we have our community development director handle this?
Let's have Chad, our economic development director.
Economic development. There's directors.
Uh, Mayor Boucher, councillors, uh, this is an application to Minnesota Housing Finance Agency for a grant of up to five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, this, we have decided to only apply for three hundred and twenty-five thousand. Uh, given our uh, somewhat lower competitive nature in the grant round. Um, the app, the application and funding, if awarded, would be used for a potential uh, housing project uh, being evaluated uh, on a more, on a parcel that the city owns. Uh, a city-sponsored uh, city-sponsored infrastructure project for that housing development. Uh, we, there is no obligation of more money for this grant uh, from the city. We're using the cost of the land at uh, five hundred and eighty thousand, five hundred and thirty thousand dollars uh, to be the, the matching resource for the grant, so no additional funding needing necessary to, to be applicable. Uh, the only, uh, the only thing that the city is committing to beyond this is uh, is searching for and identifying additional funding uh, to uh, pay for the remainder of the, of the infrastructure cost for the project, should the project move forward.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments from council? Hearing none, is there any public input on this resolution? Is there any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-five dash seventy? Any public input on the resolution authorizing the application and acceptance of a greater Minnesota housing infrastructure grant? Roll call, please.
Council Peterson?
Aye.
Council Geisler? Council Jelly?
Aye.
Council La Bla?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Next is resolution two thousand twenty-five dash seven one. Resolution authorizing and directing the mayor and city clerk to execute and deliver a purchase agreement with Hane Nguyen and Joel Perrin. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Council Peterson to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Council Jelly, Mr. Mulder?
Let's have uh, Mr. Runcetti explain this one.
Mr. Runcetti.
Um, this is a purchase agreement for a, a property on Johnson Road adjacent to that uh, Morris Thomas property that the, that the city owns. Um, we have made an offer which has been accepted uh, by the, by the current landowner. Uh, and this approval would allow us to move forward with that acquisition.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Hearing none, is there any public input on this resolution? Any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-five dash seven one? Any public input on the resolution authorizing a purchase agreement for a parcel of land and home? Roll call, please.
Council Geisler? Council Jelly?
Aye.
Council La Bla?
Aye.
Council Peterson?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye, and uh, we have no need for a closed session this evening, so we would entertain a motion to recess.
Move to recess?
Motion by Council La Bla to recess, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Council Jelly, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, same time sign.